Good afternoon and welcome to this meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. We're glad you're here to join us. Just want to start with just a few housekeeping items. If you are wanting to join to address the commission, there are forms located just outside that you can pick up and sign up to speak to the commission. When you do speak, please remember to come to the microphone and to address the commission directly, not the applicant's. We ask that you please share your name and address for the record and that you please be respectful. We are all here to do our best and address all of the cases that we hear in a fair manner, so just mutual respect is critical. Also, if you'd please join me by silencing your cell phones at this time so we can avoid any interruptions. And with that, I believe that we are ready to move forward with our agenda and receive the minutes from the August 12, 2022 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move to receive the minutes from the August 12 meeting.
The motion before the commission is to receive the minutes of the August 12, 2022 meeting. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available.
Vote aye.
Commissioner Goveen votes yes. And the motion passes. We are now in line for continuance requests. We'll begin with uncontested continuance requests.
We have items 16 and 17. Item 16 is CE 1075, requested deferred to September 22, and item 17 is case PC 10826, deferred to October 13.
Excellent. Is there a motion to grant the uncontested continuance requests as read?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the uncontested continuances as read.
Mr. Chairman, before I second that, do we want to check and make sure there's somebody here that wants to be heard?
Yes. Is there anyone that wants to be heard on items 16 and 17? It appears not.
I'll second that motion if I get a chance.
The motion before the commission is to approve the uncontested continuance requests as read. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. We're now in line for new continuance requests.
Item number four, case C 7471, requested deferred to September 8. And just, JJ, if you could confirm, it's items eight and nine that we're not continuing? Eight and nine, okay. So then the next continuance request is item 11, case PUD 1904, deferred to September 8. Item 14, case CE 1065, has been withdrawn, and item 15, case CE 1066, has been withdrawn.
Excellent. Is there anyone wanting to be heard on those items?
So are striking to make a date off of the list?
Well, the motion, I'm certain, will be one that removes eight and nine from that list. Yes, sir.
I do have a concern about that because I had a question before the meeting started that someone came up and asked, does this mean they've been continued? And I said yes. So I believe they left.
Oh. Well, then that would still be a question for the commission to address. I would recommend at this point, if there's any hesitancy, and this would obviously be the commission's prerogative, but if there's hesitancy, I'd say let's go ahead and hear both items.
Okay.
Especially if the applicant is hesitant.
Yeah, I'm Ross Morris with Morris Engineering, and my applicant, we're here on eight in line, and it was kind of new to us. We didn't know that there was a request for it, and evidently the commissioner from that ward requested it, but we don't have, but maybe three or four TEs on either the rezoning or the preliminary plat. So it was a recommended approval from staff, so we didn't really feel like it was necessary to continue it. We thought we could move ahead and at least be heard on it.
Have you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner Powers.
Have you had any contact from other persons about either of those cases?
As in surrounding homeowners or? No, no, we've not heard any, and I don't think there's any protesters, right?
Well, there were several people here, I think, as Commissioner Klaire indicated, and they did come up and ask whether that indication was if it would be continued. So, and now they are gone, so that concerns me.
That concerns me as well, as well as the fact that Commissioner Hinkle did reach out to me specifically and said that he had requested the continuances. So I assumed that that was something that had been worked out. So he did mention he had some concerns. We didn't go into detail because it seemed that there was consensus for us to grant the continuance.
Okay. So that's at his request, and I mean, I don't know the people, but so there are some people here, I guess, on this item?
There were, were some people here.
You'd have to address, please, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Aaron Evans with Evans Sign Homes. Mr. Hinkle left me a voicemail yesterday that said that he wouldn't be here, but that we were on the docket today.
Okay. Well, then I think that the only thing for the, the question is for the commission to decide whether we grant the continuance or not at this point. Certainly happy to hear you all's feedback on that, on whether or not we should grant that continuance, and then we can just have that discussion before we vote.
Well, we can just go ahead with the item and have that discussion, and if it becomes, you know, overwhelming against the item, then maybe we will, I mean, we will be able to ask for a continuance at that time.
Okay.
If we can, we can move in that direction.
Do we have anybody signed up to speak on those items?
We don't have anyone signed up to speak on those items, I believe. So I think that seems appropriate to me. It's just, let's get to item A, let's hear what they have to say, and then decide if we feel comfortable making a decision at that point or not.
What I would say, Ms. Chair, what I would say is, I guess I'd be all right with that, but be sure, cognizant as we tiptoe into it, that we be quick to stop it without the, like, I'm barely, I'm almost wanting to just say, I hate it, and this doesn't usually happen where there's confusion of whether it was going to be continued, but if there were citizens and potential protesters that were told it was going to be continued, and I regret if they were told that in final, but like, just hear it a little bit in order, but I think be prepared for probably to stop it and say, you know what, we're going to have to have the, going to have to continue it pretty quick so that the...
I mean, if there's consensus right now, if there's consensus right now that we want to continue it, we can, of course, include that in the motion right now. That is our prerogative. So I guess let's just, do we want to hear that first, or?
Either way, either way, I don't know.
I reviewed the item, and that didn't concern me, but the potential that people have citizens' voices don't get heard, that does concern me. So I kind of...
Are you thinking some people left them?
Yeah, that's the issue. That doesn't seem the right way to proceed.
I guess lesson learned is it's not final until...
Until it is.
That's right.
Yeah, it was just new to us when we got here. We were like, well, wait a minute, we don't have hardly any TEs, recommended approval, and we were like, well, why continue? We're here, and evidently, nobody was signed up, so we were like, well, we need to move forward, you know?
In the voice bill, I got from Mr. Hinkle, who said that we were still on the docket for today.
Then I think let's, let's go ahead and hear a motion either way, either to include items eight and nine or to not include eight and nine in the continuance requests.
I will move approval of the new continuance requests excluding items eight and nine to be heard individually.
The motion before the body is to grant the continuance requests for items four, 11, 14, and 15 as read. Is there a second? And, well, not eight and nine, right?
Did you say not?
Yeah.
Did you say include or not?
Not exclude.
Exclude, yeah, yeah.
Exclude from the continuance, which means we will hear them.
Which means we will hear them, yes.
Okay.
That has been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please vote when available.
So the motion was to include it?
The motion excluded eight and nine, so we will hear eight and nine when those...
I didn't want to go and leave too, not knowing what happened, so.
Not voted. Let's find out.
And the motion passes.
Yeah.
We are now in line for the public hearings and the consent docket.
Okay, item, the first item is case PC 10830, application to rezone 907 Northwest 44th Street from SPOD 49 to R1. The second item is case C 7466, final plat of Creekside Village Phase Two, located south of Southwest 29th Street and east of South Check Hall Road. Item three is case 7468, final plat of Knox Farm Edition Section Two, located south of Northwest 178th Street and west of North Portland Avenue. And item four was continued.
Excellent. Is there anyone here who wanted to be heard on items one, two, or three? Please.
Good afternoon. My name is Clay Condry. This is item number one. We're just wanting to build residential houses. The SPUD didn't allow for parking in the front, so residential is allowed, but the parking was negotiated as part of a SPUD back in like 1988. So I live 913 Northwest 44th Street.
Are you the applicant for item one?
Yes, sir.
Oh, we're about to consider just automatically passing this item. So as long as, I assume you're in support.
Yep.
Because I think we are, and I think there'll be consensus for that shortly. Is there a motion on the consent docket?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent docket as read.
Commissioner Klaire has moved to approve the consent docket as read. Is there a second? Now, let's see if it's on Prime Gov. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. Excellent, and it is approved. See, you didn't even have to give us the explanation. You're all good. It is approved, or recommended for approval. We are now in line for items requiring a separate vote. The first item to be heard is item five.
This is case number C 7467, a final plat of the orchard at Raywood Station, Raywood Section Three, and it's located west of North Sarah Road and south of Northwest 36th Street, also variance to Section 3.6.2.2.5 of subdivision regulations.
Good afternoon. Kendall Dillon with Crap and Toll, representing the applicant. This is the fourth final plat of the Raywood Manor Edition. There are three TEs, obviously, as mentioned. TE number two regards a variance. The staff report does reflect that this plat is in conformance with the sub regs as well as approved preliminary plat. However, after we submitted it in staff's review, I think we decided, or they determined, that the preliminary plat expired in June. So that's the purpose of the variance, is to be able to allow us to go forth with this plat. It, in essence, is the last phase of the plat. If you'll notice, there is eight acres to the west. It's got some, a well and some oil and gas stuff. At some point in time, if that ever goes away, there could be one more phase. It's pretty limited in what it would do, so I don't know that a new preliminary plat would benefit anybody. So that's the purpose of the variance, and we'd ask for that as well as your approval.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Klaire, this is Ward One. Would you like to start a discussion?
Yeah, no questions from me. So unless there's any other discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Is there anyone here wanting to be heard on item five, C 7467? Any questions or comments from commissioners? I think we're ready.
All right, I'll move with TE two, the variance first, move approval to variance to Section 3.6.2.2.5 of the subdivision regulations.
The motion before the commission is to approve a variance to Section 3.6.2.2.5 of the subdivision regulations. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes.
Okay. Then I'll move approval of item C 7467, subject to the TEs.
Commissioner Klaire moves approval of C 7467, subject to the technical evaluations. Please cast, it's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available.
Thank you.
And the motion passes. Thank you. We are now ready for item six.
This is case PUD 1906, application to rezone 14600 South Portland Avenue from agricultural.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant. This is a PUD that would allow for a modified, single-family residential subdivision to be built. I did speak to the commissioner for the ward, although he's gone, he did indicate he was supportive. We do agree with the TE, and he'd asked us to add a new TE to remove EFS, which we are agreeable to.
So that would be to remove EFS as an acceptable building material?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hinkle is not here, but are there any questions for the applicant from the commission? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to be heard on item six, PUD 1906? Seeing none, I think we're ready for motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move recommending an approval to City Council for PUD 1906, subject to the first TE and adding TE two that removes EFS as an acceptable building material.
The motion before the commission is to recommend approval of PUD 1906 to City Council. It has been seconded by Commissioner Powers, and that motion does include the addition of a technical evaluations to remove EFS as an acceptable building material. Please cast your votes when available. The motion passes. Thank you. We're now in line for item seven.
This is case C 7469, preliminary plat of Shiraz Vineyard, and this is located north of Southwest 149th Street and east of South Portland Avenue. This also has a variance to Section 5.3.1.2.5 of subdivision regulations.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. So this is the plat that goes with the rezoning case you just heard. As Mr. Butler mentioned, there is a variance, so I want to talk briefly about that. So the reason for the variance is because of the floodway that exists both to the south and to the east. And so connection is frankly an impossibility, moving this way or this way. So we request the variance for that reason. We do have adequate access on the arterial, and we do have a stub up to the north. Then on seven, we would ask to modify the language to read, "The developer will be responsible for construction of a sidewalk or pay a fee in lieu along South Portland Avenue." So either we will construct it or pay a fee in lieu along Portland Avenue, but then strike and along all of the common areas, including across creeks and drainage areas. Based upon the topography of the land, if we were required to install sidewalks across creeks and drainage areas, it would be very problematic. So the neighborhood will be, you know, full of sidewalks. We're not thinking to, you know, get out of what the ordinance requires in terms of sidewalks, but to put them along, across creeks and drainage areas is a problem. So we will be responsible for construction or paying a fee in lieu of the sidewalk along Portland Avenue.
Thank you. And Commissioner Hinkle is not here, but I will ask staff for any feedback, if they have any, on the recommended amendment to TE seven.
So, and Sarah or JJ, correct me if I'm wrong, but my recollection, when we spoke about this, our concern was that the residents would be able to access the open space to the south because it's all floodplain and will remain open space and an amenity. So just wanted to make sure that the sidewalk would continue across on that street frontage, and also that they would have access to the, to the open space, and there wouldn't be like, you know, a drainage, an impassable drainage basin, for example.
Sure. So obviously, all the homes will have sidewalks in front of the homes, and then we have, you know, access points that will be able to access common areas at various stages. So the sidewalks through the neighborhood will lead them to the ability to access where the walking trails will be that we committed to in the plat.
Is that, okay, so I think we're covered, yeah. I just had a quick question for clarification. On Portland Avenue, is your intent to only build sidewalk along the portion that the lots are being built on, which would be like, you know, the north half?
No.
Yes. I mean, the rest of it is floodplain floodway. This portion of the land is ag preserve. It's unlikely that sewer could ever get there, so it's unlikely that there would ever be development, and there's really nothing going on once you get past here. So I'm guessing, Kendall, the limit of our sidewalks would be the limit of the plat.
Any other questions from commissioners?
I'd like staff to speak to that specifically. Is that okay with us, that it's only adjacent to the portion that's going to be developed?
I think that's what the ordinance requires.
Is it?
Typically.
We don't need a variance, so I take that to mean that what we have proposed is compatible with the ordinance, but...
Okay.
Could I ask about, oops, my, staff about fee in lieu, is that a, is that a right of the developer, or is that something that's subjective to city decision-making?
Well, I'll tell you the reason we want, I'll let staff answer your specific question. The reason we want it is there are current discussions ongoing between Oklahoma City, my client, and the county to improve Portland Avenue. So we think it makes better sense to perhaps pay that fee in lieu of, so that when the construction project to improve Portland Avenue happens, our portion is paid in, rather than we go construct a sidewalk, the county, city does a joint project, and they rip it out.
Okay. Does staff have any comment on that? Is that...
Perhaps.
Sound policy?
If Barrett could comment on the fee in lieu. My understanding, and this may be out of date, but I know that the fee in lieu is too low. It's not consistent with what we currently pay for sidewalks. I don't know if there would be additional right-of-way required for this project. I would guess not. We probably already have the right-of-way that we need, so I wouldn't, I don't know why we wouldn't be able to build a sidewalk on the property line and still accommodate a widening, but there are other engineering considerations.
Barry Lodge Public Works. I think as far as the fee in lieu of sidewalk is probably appropriate. I think there should be, when this is done, they'll have to dedicate the additional right-of-way to the 50-foot width along Portland, so that, you know, to increase that from the statutory. Maybe the bigger issue, and I am not aware of a project at this point that's going to do any improvement along Portland Avenue. Now, there may be something that's going on that I'm not aware of. Part of the problem, though, is if they, if they go with what we're thinking typically, the county would be involved in on a widening project, would be a two-lane road that's going to require the roadside ditches, which is going to push the sidewalk out, probably even farther than what would be done if it was a four-lane improvement. That's going to be the difficulty with building a sidewalk now. So because of that, I think we could probably support the fee in lieu of sidewalk. But I think we need to get some real clarification on what's going to take place on Portland Avenue, because right now, it's my understanding that Portland is a gravel road, and here we're looking at putting how many homes taking access off of that. And so that, at least in my mind at this point, is even a larger issue that needs to be clarified.
Yeah, to that point, myself, Kendall, and my client have been actively involved with Director Winger, as well as the current county commissioner and the incoming county commissioner for this area. There is support on both sides, both the city and the county, to find a way to make this work. My client's also engaged in finding a way to make this work, so it will happen. My client can't sell these homes if the customer is driving on gravel roads. So my client feels comfortable that it's going to happen, and I do too, based upon the conversations I've been a part of.
So based on what we've heard so far, the revised language is satisfactory to the issues that we've expressed so far?
That's what I've heard.
Any other questions for the applicant from the commission?
I do. Mr. Box, on this map, there's a gap that shows between blocks 16 and 17, and then between blocks 17 and four. What, when you reference the access to the open space to the south, I think that you were making reference to those. What do those gaps represent exactly?
It's common area.
And so green paved what?
They won't be paved. They will be green. At the final plat, we'll have to decide all of the drainage issues that exist, but there will not be an instance in which there is not access from a pedestrian to the common area.
Are they intended to serve primarily a drainage function? Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Is there anyone here wanting to be heard on item seven, C 7469? I think we are ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of the variance to Section 5.3.1.2.5 of the subdivision regulations.
The motion before the commission is to approve the variance to Section 5.3.1.2.5 of the subdivision regulations. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of item C 7469, subject to the technical evaluations and amending TE seven to read, "The developer will be responsible for constructing a sidewalk or pay a fee in lieu of along South Portland Avenue." Delete the remaining text.
The motion before the body is to approve, is to, excuse me, is to approve C 7469 with the technical evaluations as amended in the record. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now in line for item eight.
This is SPOD... This is SPOD 1441, application to rezone 929 Southwest 88th Street from C 3 to SPOD 1441.
Is the applicant present?
Mr. Chair, could I make a comment before they start because of the confusion earlier? Just want to make sure we're clear. It's a little, as I said, different than usual how some people are here. To go ahead and let you speak, I want to make sure I'm clear, at least for myself, maybe for everybody, I am probably not going to be ready to vote for or against actual approval. If you convince me it can be approved, I'm still not going to approve it, because I want to hear, I want to, I want to continue until somebody else can speak. If you would like, since you're already here, to continue on as we voted and tell us a little bit about it, the people that were here, it's recorded. They can see it. They can get the benefit of what you had to say.
So you're at an abstain already, or?
I'm probably going to make a motion to continue until a later date to where the folks that were not here get a chance to be here and speak.
You would prefer to continue it? Okay.
I would. This was more of an accommodation to you that as long as you're here and you got a poster board and things, and if you want to give a little bit of it for the future, for the folks that may be at home, or for us, then feel free, but I didn't want to lead you to believe that I or maybe the others would be ready to approve it.
Was it the only one? I forgot a majority.
I wanted to say something as well. I just wanted to apologize because I mis, I misheard or misinterpreted the motion, and I thought it was include versus exclude. So I was, I was seconding the motion to continue it, not to.
So you prefer to continue it too, then?
I do because of the public comment.
How many you have left?
I do, I also would like to say that I think I support the application, and so it's good if you get it out there, and I think you've already made some.
I mean, we can go through it, but if I got to go through it again in a month, I mean.
Well, I think, so these are recorded, so anyone that's not here, maybe some of those folks that left earlier might have the opportunity to view the presentation recorded, and they might not have any objections after the information is out there, and they might not need to come back next time, and there might not be any objections next time. So I think, I mean, I'm kind of in agreement. I think it makes sense to just go ahead and present your case. Again, you might not get the approval this time around, but it might make things easier next, next good round.
Okay. We'll go ahead and present it and see where y'all land.
Okay. Well, you've got, you've got five minutes.
All right. This project is down off 89th and Southwestern. It was previously platted years ago, this, this platted area, and this property is just sitting there vacant.
I'm sorry.
There's commercial.
Oh, my God, it's different.
Back to the, to the east off of Western, and you can see 87th is uncaved, and we've got ADA Street, and we're agreeing to pay a client up across our frontage. There's existing residence on the west side of Klein, yeah, right there, and they just got a gravel drive from the intersection up to their house. You can see it right there. So it's pretty much an infill project that my client's wanting to do. He's looking at doing duplexes in there. The constraints on the boundary meant that there were going to be a couple of, of lots that would be big enough for, say, a triplex as opposed to a duplex. So we proposed it that way. You can see on lots one, 11, and 12, we didn't have enough to make an extra duplex, so we just made them a little bigger for a triplex. We've looked at the TEs, and I don't, there wasn't anything that was, we couldn't, we didn't find surmountable, so we agreed to all the TEs on the project, and I really don't have a whole lot more than that, because it's not that big of a project, but if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them, as will my client, Mr. Aaron Evans. Evans Fine Homes is here. So if you have any questions, we'd love to do it. We passed around a, some paperwork showing the houses that we're proposing, the little duplexes we're proposing in there, so you could get a view of what he's proposing. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
So for clarification, on TE2 says to remove the triplex from Lot 5. That's something you're in agreement with?
On Lot? Yeah, we agree to that.
Okay. Any questions from commissioners at this point? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on item eight?
As well, the companion item is for the preliminary plat, in case you, I mean, just so you're aware of that.
I do have something that I wanted to observe, I guess, albeit that these, as we are often reminded, are pretty pictures only, conceptual drawings. I note that this one in particular does not have a front door that faces the street.
Does it have a what?
A front door.
Oh, a front door.
That addresses the street. And although I used to not think anything at all about that, I have been persuaded over time that it's a good idea, and most recently actually saw some duplexes without doors that honestly, even driving past them and being able to see basically three sides of them, you don't see anything that looks like a door, and it's, it's a very odd situation. So big proponent of front doors that face the street, FYI.
Okay. Thank you for that, thank you for that information. That other picture, it's a, I started work with an architect in Florida about a year ago, and that the other building that's not the one with the cars in the picture is a house I've, I'm building in Yukon on an Oklahoma City permit that the architect I'm working with in Florida designed. And then the other picture, the duplexes, are the, this is conceptual design of what we're kind of proposing for the outsides of the duplexes to look like, because he, I'm working with him on the design of the buildings for this development. So I got some more pictures of that same house that he helped me design on this billboard I can show you. It's, it does have a door on the front, but you can't see it in that picture that is the one picture I sent around.
Perhaps, perhaps.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from commissioners? Anyone wanting to be heard on item eight, SPOD 1441?
Just a quick, a quick clarification. So this image, you're saying this is not proposed for this property?
Those are, those are some, a project that has been built in Florida and that followed some of the similar design concepts that I'm thinking of using for this development as far as the outside Florida style. Nothing exactly at all, but just something that's already been designed and built that my architect down there designed.
Okay. And so the commission, there, it sounds like we should first hear a motion regarding the continuance.
So, yeah, I'll do that. I want to start with, so apologies on behalf of the commission if you were told that it's going to be heard today, and if we told other people differently that it was going to be continued, so sorry. That hadn't happened in the years that I've been here, so appreciate the information. I would generally don't have any other questions. I hope you appreciate the feedback. I hope the people at home hear it, and maybe they work anything out, but with what the others were told about it would be continued. I hate to do that to y'all, but I'm going to make a motion to continue this one, and I will be doing so separately unless I can do it together on both eight and nine.
I think we're going to have to still go ahead and hear item nine. So this, the motion would be for only item eight.
Yep. Motion to continue it with apologies.
The motion for.
To the September 8th meeting. Whichever one.
Two weeks.
Whatever works.
Two weeks. So at the next meeting, so the, the motion before the commission is to, to continue item eight, SPOD 1441, to the September 8th meeting of the Planning Commission. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item nine.
Item nine is the associated plat, C 7470, preliminary plat of Village Place Town Home, located north of southwest 89th Street and west of southwestern.
Anything you have to add on it? Otherwise, I'll make a motion to continue it. Did you already cover it?
Okay.
Make a motion to continue to September 8th.
The motion before the commission is to continue item nine, C 7470, to the September 8th meeting of the Planning Commission. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. And I believe the motion was by Commissioner La Forge, just for.
All right. Okay. Well, thank you, and we'll be back in a couple of weeks, and if you have any questions between now and then, if you would get ahold of me or my client, we would appreciate it and have a chance to work it out with you and see where we're at. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd also recommend you, you give Commissioner Hinkle a call as well.
Okay. Thank you.
We're now in line for item 10.
Item 10 is SPOD 1436, application to rezone 3528 Northwest 26th Street from R1.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Court Drive. This is an application that would permit the tract you see to be from one home to two independent single-family residences. This is an application type that you've seen quite, quite a bit of here lately in the core. So the SPUD, as drafted, would limit the site to two single-family dwelling units. In talking to Commissioner Powers, there are some additional TEs that she'd like to add. So to start, we do agree with TE's one and two, and we'd like to add a few of them. So we would act to add TE3 that would delete use units 8300.40, 8250.13, 8200.5, and 8200.8. So what that would do is limit the SPUD to just a single-family residential use unit as modified in the SPUD, and then the Community Recreation Property Owners Association. Additionally, we would like to prohibit signage, and what would be the fifth TE, prohibit dumpsters.
So wait a second. Prohibit, four would be prohibit signage?
Yes, sir.
And then five is prohibit dumpsters?
Yeah, because these will be serviced by Oklahoma City Trash Service, not private dumpsters.
And just for clarification on TE3, that is to remove 8300.40, 8250.13, 8200.5, and 8200.8?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Powers, this is your ward. Would you like to begin our discussion?
First of all, I'd like to ask if there's anybody here who wants to be heard on this item. I am in agreement with this application. There, I had been contacted by some folks over the neighborhood, and there was, we continued this last time in order to provide an opportunity for there to be a meeting. And the applicant, I think, made every effort, and in fact, I made some effort to make that happen. It did not happen. I spoke to the same person I had spoken to before this morning, but I believe that largely he and perhaps others, I never spoke to anybody else, were confused about what the application was really about, and I think that he probably was eventually persuaded that it would in fact only be two single-family homes. I, I do like the way that the setbacks have been addressed, so that their sightlines will be, you know, observed. I think this will be a good addition to this little neighborhood, and I'm ready to make a motion to approve.
Can I ask one question before we hear the motion? What's, why, why this designed for the parking lot? Why the shared parking lot instead of just having just a driveway? Each one having just a driveway and making it simple? Is there not parking allowed on Ridgecrest Drive, or?
Well, we wanted each unit to have the ability to have the parking and then keep it, to limit it to the one drive. We think it's a better design.
Gotcha.
Also, the, the street there is, I think, unusually narrow. Maybe it just seemed that way to me because there were trucks parked there for the construction at the time, but I, I think the ability to have parking off the street is a benefit here.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Then I think we are ready for a motion unless there's any questions or comments from commissioners. And there's no one wanting to be heard on this item.
I'll move approval of item number 10, SPOD 1436, with the five TEs as articulated. Do you want me to go through them again?
Yes, if you don't mind, just one more time.
And so.
Or I can.
No, I'm sorry. I'm just being fumble-fingered here. So TE number one is the modification of the building line setback, clarification of which side of the building we're talking about there. Number two is, although it says freestanding signs will not be permitted, it actually can just say no signs will be permitted, and that would be fine with me.
So amending TE2.
So TE3, we're going to delete additional use units 8300.40, 8250.13, 8200.5, and 8200.8, leaving only 8250.3 Community Recreation Property Owners Association and 8200.14 Single Family Residential, limited to no more than two dwelling units. And then TE number four will be no dumpsters.
Excellent.
Quick question. Quick question. Are these for lease units or for, or ownership?
I'm sorry?
Are these for lease units?
They could be either. I mean, the way we've got it set up is we're going to have the ability to split it, so they could be sold as individuals, or they could be rented like any other single-family home.
So just bringing it up, Commissioner Powers wanted to say no signs shall be permitted, so I just wanted to say, does that exclude, you know, a for-lease sign?
Yeah. So the, for sale, for lease, those types of signs are handled differently under the code. What she's talking about would be like a, you know, project identification sign or freestanding sign. Temporary signs are fine.
Well, she just said no signs, so.
Well, instead of, instead of the, the limitation of freestanding signs, signage is not permitted. Rather than, I think what it says in the staff report is something about, you know, per the, the use unit, and I, I don't think it needs to be that complicated. It won't have any signs, period.
Our planning director recommended we just change it to no permanent signs.
There we go. I like, I like specific language.
I think no signage is pretty specific, but if you prefer permanent, that's fine with me.
So amending the now revised TE2 to say no permanent signs shall be permitted?
Okay.
Excellent. That's our, that's our motion. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Commissioner Clare. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. Thank you. Now in line for item 12.
Item 12 is SPOD 1439, application to rezone 1804 East Madison Street from R1 to SPOD 1439.
Good afternoon. Mark Zitzhau with Johnson &amp; Associates, 1 East Sheridan Avenue. Before you today is a SPUD to allow for a parking lot. Before, but before I get into that, I just want to talk about this area a little bit and kind of how this project came to be. About four years ago, we came through with an SPOD for the south side of 23rd at Rhode Island on Baltimore. This project's now called the East Point Project. Centennial Health is there, East Side Pizza. There's a lot of other local businesses that have popped up, and that project has won a significant number of international and global awards through ULI and the American Institute of Architects. When that happened, I think it spurred more development and the desire to be in this area and provide more services for the folks in northeast Oklahoma City. So the developers of that project acquired the northwest corner of 23rd and Rhode Island, which earlier this year, we had a SPOD approved for a hotel development, if you recall that project. So the project for the hotel is a specific plan that you will be hearing either at your next meeting or the one after. That application's been submitted. But we do have a rendering that you'll be seeing shortly on that. It's a four-story hotel with retail and some event space in there. This would be a significant improvement along northeast 23rd and bring an amenity of a hotel that will be really the first one since a hotel was constructed in the Health Science Center. So with that project came parking requirements, and so they were able to acquire a lot catty-corner to the site on Madison, which is what this SPUD is for. So in addition, there's going to be cross-access agreements with another parking lot, and we'll get into that detail more when the specific plan is heard. But this SPOD is specifically for a parking lot that is going to serve what is called the Hamlin Hotel south of this. So when we think about 23rd Street in most commercial districts, we think about issues with parking and creep into neighborhoods, and I think the, the natural place for that parking is immediately behind the commercial uses. So including parking along Madison would not be the first time that that has occurred in this area. Madison, if you look behind, I'm upside down, there's a church on the other end of the block that has a parking lot, and then to our west, there's also a bank and many other commercial uses that have the parking lots along Madison. On the south side of 23rd, the East Point Project also had its parking further south where residential used to be. That plat is a little bit different in how it was set up, but we feel that parking along Madison is the appropriate spot for it. I think, we think about the other options where parking could be included, it would be along 23rd Street. And I think when we're trying to create an urban corridor in a place that's walkable, 23rd Street will have a future streetscape project, surface parking lots along 23rd is not desired either. So knowing that there's residential near us, we've included landscape buffers, and we think we've worked through how to mitigate. think we've worked through how to mitigate that use. We've limited our signage to one directional sign that's only sixteen square feet. But the, the parking lot is really going to service the valet, so it's really going to be there as a bit of overflow as needed. I think the hotel industry's changed quite a bit with Uber and Lyft and other ride-sharing, so hotels are already seeing a lesser demand than what the typical code would require. So with that, be happy to answer any questions you have, but we would ask for your recommendation of approval.
Thank you, thank you. And this is Ward seven, my ward. I'll ask about TE two. It looks like in your rendering that's on the screen, that there's access to that alley behind Mid-K, which is the commercial property just south of this. Does TE two impact your ability to have that flow through that alley, or no? Am I just being overly cautious?
Yeah, I think TE two really is stating what we had designed, which was a one-way in off of Madison. We're going to use the alley to take the exit, so they can go back out to Rhode Island. We really tried to mitigate the amount of traffic that was going to go on Madison. So you're really going to have a turn the corner into the parking lot, out the alley, and then back to Rhode Island.
Thank you. I don't think that I have any other questions. Any questions from commissioners?
Yeah, I had one on TE one, is the intent there, it looks to me like in their site plan, they're providing a five-foot landscape buffer. So is the intent for TE one to provide a two-foot tall hedge along, I guess it's along the street?
Yeah, so in the, in the SPUD, we have a ten-foot landscape buffer required along our east side, which is reflected in the specific plan. We've had final survey and engineering work done, so you'll be seeing this in, I think, two weeks. But we, we are agreeable to provide that, that row of hedges. I think the concern was if the parking lot layout was to change, and you had head-in parking facing the houses across the street, there'd be a landscape buffer there. So we're agreeable to that, we don't have any issue there. But we've kind of purposely designed the parking lot to not have that situation.
If that's, I would just like to reword that TE that says a hedge with a minimum height of two feet shall be provided along the street frontage. Because right now, I, I didn't know whether it was width or height or what.
I, I support it. Any other questions, it's from commissioners? Is there anyone wishing to be heard on SPUD fourteen thirty-nine? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion with your amended language for TE one.
I'll move recommendation approval of spud fourteen thirty-nine, amending TE one to read a hedge with a minimum height of two feet shall be provided along the street frontage.
Thank you. The, the motion before the commission is to recommend approval of SPUD fourteen thirty-nine to City Council, including an amendment to TE one as read into the record. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
We're now in line for item thirteen.
This is PUD nineteen oh seven, application to rezone one four seven four four North Council Road from PUD seven seventeen.
Is there an applicant present?
Good afternoon, my name's Charles Allen with Allen Engineering. This is a, and the owner of the property, Jason Martin's also here, if you have any questions for him. This is a five-point-one acre tract of land over off Council Road. It's at the end of a private road, fifty-foot private road. And there's an existing cul-de-sac that serves the property. His desire is to divide this so that he can build two other homes, one for his mother and, and one for himself, to downsize in the future. We've, we've had, I think we had one call last week with Curtis about side yard setbacks and building line frontage that we've addressed and sent, and I've got some extras if you all want to look at those. We agree with TE one with the fire protection, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is Ward eight, Commissioner Noble.
Did anyone else sign up to speak on this?
I don't have anyone signed to speak, signed up to speak. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on this item thirteen, PUD nineteen oh seven?
And did the staff have anything? Curtis, was there anything on those setbacks? It just seemed the lots were very different.
What, what happens with the tennis court?
Pardon me?
How does the tennis court, is that a lot line going across the tennis court?
It, it is, and that's, that's not the latest one, but it's, that line actually moves about twenty feet to the southwest. But the tennis courts will be demolished.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion.
Recommend approval of PUD nineteen oh seven, subject to the TEs.
The motion before the commission is to recommend approval of PUD nineteen oh seven to City Council, including the one technical evaluation as written. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. Thank you. And that concludes our, our items to be heard at two twenty-one, which is very nice. We could have the rest of our day back, ladies and gentlemen. With that being said, we are now ready, are there any additional items? We don't have any additional items? Any reports from Planning Commission committees? No reports from Planning Commission committees. Reports from Planning Commission members, Commissioner Clare?
No, sir.
Commissioner Powers? Commissioner Fraley? Commissioner Govine?
Nope.
Commissioner Noble? Commissioner LaForge? I will say briefly that I know that we have had a discussion about planning, about study sessions. And so I did think it would be a good idea for us to start thinking through and making suggestions about study sessions that we, we might want to see in the future. I know that we, we've kind of discussed a few, just kind of offhanded. So while I had this opportunity to have everyone together, I wanted to mention some in hopes that we could probably figure out when staff wanted to, to visit about those things. I didn't know if some of our new commissioners have been privy to some of our previous discussions about fire suppression systems, which is just a fun issue. I saw Commissioner Powers' eyes when I mentioned that, because we have discussed it a lot. But I know we have new commissioners who haven't heard it. I have great curiosity about deannexation in our city and how we generally address sprawl and our, this commission's obligation to assist in that as we're approving new developments in those areas. Obviously, the easement closure language, which it sounds like there is, there's been ongoing discussion about that among staff, as we're, we're developing some consensus about that. But I, I should hope once we've reached a conclusion that the commission can hear in detail where we landed on that, so we know how to handle those issues in the future. Then another very sensitive topic about environmental considerations, tree preservation and vulnerable aquifers. I've been on the commission for four years. I don't know that I've ever clearly understood how to handle vulnerable aquifers in terms of my evaluation for new projects. And the solution, the best I've ever heard about tree preservation is, well, the, the developer could always just go and remove the trees before it even gets here for our consideration anyway, so our, our abilities to do anything about it are limited. So I, I have a strong feeling that that is a very pro-developer point of view, and that we should probably have a more holistic point of view that's presented to us as we are evaluating projects. So those are just some areas of interest that I have. Is there anything that's on anyone else's mind, or does that list sound good of things that you all would like to hear about, or anything sound bad that I mentioned?
I support all three of those. I, I, yeah.
We might need one on recycling after the study session, too.
We might, we might.
You know, I, there, there is something that I would like for us to have some guidance in terms of presentation from, from staff, and that is how our decisions about, it's typically residential development, in the, the real fringe, affect utilities development.
Yes.
I mean, there were issues about that that was sort of vague in my mind about increases costs and the further out you get, and so on and so forth. But this concept of leapfrogging and how it may in fact sort of doom certain parcels to never being served by water because of decisions we're making now that will create obstacles to utility placement later, that's something I would like to know a little bit more about and be able to think about a little more clearly.
I completely agree. And it might be good if we're addressing those systems to also, since we have new commissioners, again, address the septic issue.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other thoughts on that? And I'm sure we can work, now that that list is out in the public, maybe we can, I can visit with staff and we can start talking about scheduling on that as well. Excellent. Planning Department?
Just going along with that, yes, we'll, we'll coordinate that, and we'll get a, a feel from the commissioners, kind of what your schedules are and how frequently you'd like to have. Some of these, it sounds like we can combine into a few, you know, one study session. Just briefly mention, we are having a study session on the eighth, where we'll have the Chamber of Commerce and the Alliance for Economic Development come and talk about employment land, not just its importance, but what we're doing now is kind of the next phase, what actions we're taking. And also, of course, as we usually do, talk about the Planning Commission's involvement in that. But that should be very informative, so that's next meeting.
Is that another eleven fifteen start, or do we know that?
Let me see, we've got that, we've got it scheduled for eleven right now.
Okay.
It's eleven o'clock on the eighth. And I, I will actually be absent on the eighth, so you'll have Commissioner Clare here, who will do an outstanding job, too. Anything else from Planning Department?
No, thank you.
Municipal Council's office? Any citizens to be heard? Our staff? Other business? And I think we're ready for the motion to adjourn. So move. The motion is to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Been seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those pose nay, we are adjourned.